2022 Public Work Session to Order. Could we all please stand for the Pledge to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
This evening, I'm going to ask that we all take a moment with Commissioner Ames passing for a moment of silence for Commissioner Ames and his family. Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome to everyone here this evening. I'm glad we're all back. I hope you all had a nice holiday season and have a great start to your new year. And we will have hopefully a productive school year here and move forward and hopefully all stay healthy. So at this point, we have no presentations, but I will call this meeting or turn it over to Dr. Dymensik, who will begin with our meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Schlegel. And once again, welcome to everyone and Happy New Year as well to 2022 as we continue on with this school year. This is the January Public Work Session of the Cornwall Lebanon School District Board of School Directors. And as such, we will conduct this as we have our other work sessions in the past where the administration will be presenting items to the Board of School Directors for review and discussion consideration. We are also live streaming this live here in the Cedar Crest High School LGI. And the link to the live stream meetings is located under the School Board Meetings page on the district website. So if there are questions from any of our guests in attendance, we will have those about any of the items that are discussed tonight. We'll have the opportunity to ask those questions at the conclusion of our meeting. So without anything further, I'm just going to go into some highlights here. I just, we have many activities over the past month. Our student holiday concerts, our annual holiday breakfast for senior citizens, which we did bring back this year. We're very excited to do that. And as I mentioned, we're about halfway through the school year here with the semester ending here just in a couple of weeks. We do have this week in the high school, we have Keystone testing that will be administered. We'll have some shifting schedules to accommodate that. We have some other testing that will be taking place later this month. For next week, our regular meeting will be held in the high school auditorium. And this will be due next week, not next month, but next week. Our regular meeting will be held there. And this will be due to the number of student recognitions that we have, as well as that this is School Board Director Appreciation Month. And we will have a number of different groups here to recognize our Board of School Directors. We have some agenda items on here. I just want to highlight a couple of the ones that we're going to be talking about. One is just this process where we are with our 2022-23 budget. This began back in the fall and that we'll be making a recommendation based on that presentation tonight. We also have some information about our enrollment projections as well, looking, going next year, but also looking forward into the future. We will also be discussing our future campus renovation project, how this process will work, how this process is financed. And then also, we have some policies that we will be presenting that are under review, some that were on the table. And then we have some other ones that will be on for, to be discussed. So those are some of the highlights of what we'll be talking about this evening. Once again, we continue to have a great amount of cooperation from our students, our staff and our community. And that is very much appreciated as we continue to keep focused on our mission of educating and serving our students. So we're going to move right in then to Buildings and Grounds. And I will let Mrs. Hens take this section right here.
Okay, so just a couple of updates on, on the projects that have been happening throughout the school year so far. One of them is the high school alumni gym. Just wanted to show pictures, it's a beautiful floor, came out very nice. And we are pretty much complete. There are a couple of punch list items that need to be done, but other than that, we are complete. And I would like to share a video, it's a two-minute video, of the actual progress of it, thanks to Wes Bencine putting it together. So Jason, if you want to put on the video. As you can see, there's a lot that is, goes into this floor. So I just wanted to share that. And again, thank you to Wes for putting it together. It's beautiful. This, just a reminder, this is a floor that had to be redone due to damage of water and it was covered by our insurance. Also, under the floor, we did have, it's an air ventilation system that was put underneath the flooring to hopefully avoid the situation in the future. Oh, gosh. Yeah, it was, it was probably a good three months. However, there were times where they weren't here. They weren't here to do anything. I don't know, for whatever reason, labor, I know there was a, a long wait for materials. That was a huge holdup as well.
Is there any way we can have access to that video?
That, that video should be on our website. Is that correct, Dr. Murray? After, after this meeting is out there, I mean, we can put a separate link to it, but it'll actually be part of this meeting. So we just streamed that live right now.
So if, if the contractor I'm thinking of would happen to click on that, he would be fascinated.
If you just look at this board meeting, after this board meeting is published in the very beginning of it, then you would see this meeting.
But thank you.
And then you could even slow it down and go back.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Great time lapse photography. That's from some of the cameras we have over there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we just wanted to share that. Thank you, thank you for sharing that, Jane.
Next item is the campus project. Just want to update you of where we are. I know we talked about it in November, we've been talking about it for a while now. Our projection, the estimated start is spring, summer of 2024. We did approve back in September, a facility study to be done by Beers &amp; Hoffman. So right now, we had just concluded our first initial, very high-level meeting with them, as well as the, the consultants that they have hired under the facility study. Part of the preparation is to work with the bond, bond council to, for the financial end of it. So I am working with them, I'll have more information later on on that. We'll also talk a little bit about that under the Finance and Business section. The next steps is a review, the enrollment study, as Dr. Dymensik mentioned, we will be talking about that tonight. And then the tours of the buildings with Beers &amp; Hoffman engineers that Beers &amp; Hoffman have consulted with. Those will happen hopefully within the next two weeks. And then follow-up meeting, we are planning to do one at the end of January, beginning of February.
So again, as Mrs. Hens mentioned, this is just the initial phases of this as we look to do the renovations here on this campus. This is the beginning stages with a target date of 2024.
Yes.
Is when we'd be looking, but the process starts now. Are there any questions about that? All right.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is also mine, energy efficient program. So we do participate in a demand response program. This program provides payments to us regarding reduction in our energy usage or a complete shutdown. Currently, we contract under Direct Energy, which we have a contract that expires May of 2023. Direct Energy sold off our demand response program. So now we are working with Centrica Business Solutions. So I am asking to re, sort of renew the, the contract. It should have concluded in May of 2023, but they're looking at redoing the contract. It's the exact same terms, just under Centrica Business Solutions, effective this June and running it until May of 2025. It does cover summer and winter programs. Winter programs are a little more of a challenge since our buildings are occupied with students. But we, we can reduce energy depending on what time of day it is. And then the possible annual earnings could be up to 56 annually. We are asking for our board approval next week to approve the three-year contract.
I know we've done this before, we've done this for, I don't know how many years now. And by just going to a shutdown if there's an energy need, if we can, if we can do that, we can have savings. But we don't have to do it if it's not feasible for us, so. Okay, so we, we will have a motion on next week for that item, is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, that's Buildings and Grounds, that's what we have right now. I would anticipate we're going to have a lot more there in the future as we look towards this, the campus project. The next item that we have here is Community Relations Curriculum and Staff Development. And I'm going to cover some of these items here this evening, just to give a couple of updates. So when you look at our, our dashboard numbers right now, you'll see that they were posted as of December 23rd, which was the last day that we had prior to our Christmas holiday break. And our actual numbers are lower, of course, because these are active cases, students that have been in school. Those are not posted right now, they will be posted at the end of the week. Of course, they could change by the end of the week. Right now, we're actually looking at, as of earlier today, zero at the high school, one at the middle school, two at Cornwall, zero at Ebenezer, two at South Lebanon and zero at Union Canal. Those are active cases, meaning that anyone who might have been in the school could have been positive. That's what those mean. Now, we do know that there could be inactive cases where there could be students who could have become positive over the holiday break, but they would be inactive, they were not in the school environment. And if they are sick, then they should not be here and are not, because they communicate very well with our nurses. We do also have cases where we have had some targeted mitigations with some of our programs, particularly with some of our athletics. You know, we look at that whenever we have, if we see students on a team who might be positive within that 14-day window, who would then impact our rates there, our numbers, we communicate very closely with the other school district. We look at what some enhanced mitigations are going to be, things like individual practices, small group practices. And in some cases, if the other school was not comfortable, we may postpone the event. We had that happen with some events prior to the holidays with one of our teams. It's early in the winter season, not a problem, we can reschedule them. And we also had another targeted mitigation. It was one of our intermediate unit classrooms that has some students with some high risks. And that student did shift for a very short period of time before the break. So these are the types of targeted mitigations we talked about at the very beginning of the school year with our plan. And that seems to be working, where we see where the issues are, we look at them, we communicate with the families, the students, the athletes that are involved. And again, we've had great cooperation from people when we've had to do these things. The other item I know that's come up a little bit is the, the testing. So as I think I had shared at several board meetings back in the fall, we are offering optional voluntary testing for students or staff members if they wish to avail themselves of it. It's not for the entire community, it's just for students or for staff members. And the way this works is that it is on Tuesdays, where actually have a nurse who is hired by Concentric, who is the Boston company that has been contracted by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And they set up a workstation and then they just go out to the car to take samples and process it that way. Most of the tests are coming up negative, but if people feel that they have symptoms, then they can do that. But it's working very smoothly. People just have to register for a time slot and do that. And again, it's an optional.
What's the turnover of time to see if it's positive or negative?
Oh, it's instant, it's, these are, these are rapid tests.
Rapid tests, okay.
Yeah, so, so in other words, you know, we know that we have some parents of students and some employees that they'd like to know right now, you know, where they stand, so it's a service that we're offering. That's what it is, but it is optional, it is voluntary. And of course, parents have to, have to bring their students to that. Okay? So we're, we have that going on tomorrow then. I don't know the exact numbers that we have, but we have some people that will be registered for that tomorrow. The, I think that, that's essentially my, my COVID update right there. I mean, there's, of course, there's a lot of talks and changes. One other item, I guess, would be the whole issue of, you know, quarantining time. We're still reviewing that, as well as recommendations from the PA Department of Health and just getting some updated guidance based on things that have been published by the CDC and PEA, DOH. So we're starting to get those things today and I anticipate tomorrow about, here's how they're recommending these things be done in schools. You know, practically, when we look at onset of symptoms and tests and that, it's kind of a vague, when did it actually begin to? Was it the onset of symptoms of the test? So we need to sort through that piece. We also know too, that when it comes to athletics, we will need to sort through that too, because we play within the Lancaster Lebanon League. And there's going to need to be some discussion about how that works with athletics, with that quarantine period of time being recommended going from 10 to five days. So those things are still being sorted out as we stand right now. Are there any questions about the COVID, any COVID-related issues? Okay, I'll go on to the next item that we have here, which is our Educational Partnership Program. And this is something a little bit different. We know that we have been short substitutes, all districts have, there's been a lot of talk about this for teachers. We've made some great improvements, thanks to our, our Board of Directors improving our compensation, that's helped. Of course, we still have some challenges there. But we've also been short with our classified substitutes, our paraprofessionals, our teacher assistants. And that's often one that's very difficult to fill. So what we have done is we have created a program where it would allow students who are in college education programs to be employed by us and work for us as teacher substitutes during different shifts and then also obtain their study hours that they need, their observation, their participation hours that they need for their college experience to become a certified educator. There's a lot of advantages to this in forming a pipeline, getting partnerships, and also allowing people who are entering the field, young people, young adults entering the field of education, to get some very practical, real-world experience. You think of it much like a, it's an internship, is, is what it really is. And because we have a need here, this is a great partnership that we, we think that we can avail ourselves of. That's essentially how it would work. So obviously, we would look to partner with local colleges or universities because the prospective educators, future educators would need to be in proximity and need to be able to get here. So we would have this on, this program on for approval. The cost is really a, you know, the cost is really a cost that we would pay the substitutes anyways. We've itemized it in there. I think, I think I've estimated 20, it's a little less than 20,000, but that would be over a full year because this would be money that would pay for substitutes for paraprofessionals regardless, if we could find them. The thing is, we can use the substitutes and we can use the help, and this is a great way for them to get the experience. So we would have a motion on to approve that program. And then we would start engaging with local colleges, as well as any other universities about, here's something we can offer for your students. Questions about that?
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions. Is this in lieu of student teaching? Is this prior to student teaching? Is this, I know my son did this, when he had 60 credits in education, he could substitute teach. Is that how we're looking at this, or how's this going to work?
So you have two separate things. This be in those stages prior to student teaching. Once you hit that 60-credit mark, then you could actually be a prospective teacher substitute. So this would be for individuals in the pre, pre-education programs where they have to have so many hours within the school environment. And a lot of times, these are just observation experiences, but we're going to give them some real-world experiences. But they could be working for us as a teacher assistant, and then the college would also give them the credit for the hours. What you're referring to though, Mr. Zug, that is the next step, once they achieve the 60 credits, that's another thing that we want to also make sure that local colleges are aware of, is that they can substitute as a teacher, once they've obtained that. They have a limit on the number of days, but they can do that and then we would approve them. So we're going to also make some efforts as we do this part to also make sure that those students that are in education programs are aware of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And, and these are teacher assistants, so they would be working under?
Under the supervision of a teacher. And of course, teachers and teacher programs have to have all their clearances and everything and all that too.
Right, so they've?
That's exactly what I was going to ask, what kind of clearances do we, what do they need?
So really, what the universities and the colleges do now is that for anyone who is in an education program, that it's just standard that they are expected to have all those clearances and that. And then if we would be employing them, then of course, they'd have to have all those things too. Because they would effectively be employed by us as a substitute, but then also getting those hours. So I, you know, the trick here is, is how does this work out with schedules? So that's where we would define like an AM and a PM sort of shift, but we're going to try to, so we can have people come in for half-day sections, because it might be difficult for them, depending if they have classes. Hopefully in time, our hope would be that colleges, you know, think, think about this, like when you're working out your teacher's schedules. This is a great opportunity for people who are going into education to get some very, very practical, real-world experience. And we're just trying to be creative about ways to build that pipeline. That's what we're really looking to do.
Plus, I know I did it for free.
That's right. This is better, I know, many of us did that for free, we all did that, right? All of us in our education, so it's like, hey, here's an opportunity for you, right?
Are there successful models out there, or did you just invent this?
We created this, we're going to find out, so.
Okay.
So we're going to, the biggest thing is, we just hope that the, the colleges and the universities help us to, to market this and promote this with our students.
Good.
So we'll, we'll give it a shot.
Will the students be on our board agenda to approve?
Yes. So next week, what we'd be asking for would be the approval of the program. And then in February is when we would then, hopefully, we would have students to approve. Students, college students who are in the programs, who would then be employed by us as substitutes. Okay? Again, we don't know how successful this is going to be, but we're trying to just think of creative solutions.
Do you already have schools or anybody in mind that you've already contacted that, that, you know?
Obviously.
You're saying we're going to have people in February to, to approve, so I assume you, you made contacts with schools and?
Obviously, we've worked locally with the college, you know? But that doesn't mean that we, we won't look to see if there are other schools.
Well, absolutely.
That, that might have people that could participate. If we have commuter students that live in the area, you know, we're going to explore all types of opportunities there.
That's excellent. I'm on the Elco substitute list. And I just had to, you know, reject, reject, reject several jobs because of doctor visits with my husband. But in any case, more than half of them are for paraprofessionals or for the teacher subs, aides, you know, which I'm happy to do. So this sounds like a win.
And we, we've had some good success filling some of those positions because of some of the changes we made back in November. But people still get, employees get sick, they have situations, and you still need to have substitutes. So we're able to figure out kind of what that mean is in terms of what we need.
Okay. Just page, page one of our proposal that's in our thing has all that stuff listed, all the breakdowns, timelines, candidates and forth. Yeah.
Okay. And, and it also references in there the prospective teacher substitutes that Mr. Zug was talking about as well, which is a separate issue which we still want to try to market to. Okay. So that will be on, and we've had a number of people that were involved in some of those discussions of the administration. I appreciate their, their work in doing that. We also have one high school graduate this year. Last year, we had seven, the year before, we had three, so, you know, it comes and goes. But we have one mid-year graduate that will be on for approval. Our high school seniors are eligible to graduate in three and a half years, graduate early. And so we do have one student that we, we have that will be on for approval this year. Okay? Are there any questions about any of the Community Relations Curriculum and Staff Development items? Okay, thank you. We will go on to extracurricular. And Mr. Disinger is here, I think we have you on first, Mr. Disinger, to give us a winter update, just with our athletics.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Thanks for having me outside here with your athletic company. We are competing with six sports this winter. Boys' girl basketball, we're called Pro Team High, boys' girls' women's basketball, we're called Pro Team High, bowling. And our cheerleading, we have a two-year, two-year hockey league. We have 220-plus athletes competing, great stuff, we're doing well. The winter season began November 19th. With all of our practices dryouts, training plans began December 10th. Thus far, we've got six weeks of expectations, over 4,500 student athletes on campus for practices and contests. Our spectator attendance is back to normal. We have plans this winter, we have some schedules, we're trying to record. We have plans this winter, schedule, we're trying to recognize former athletes, we have some things in work. For, I'm in both of us, Ryan Nice, why not, and basketball. And also, Ashley Boyer at light, for NBA. Their schedules aren't quite as flexible as we would like to be right now. Ladies and gentlemen, we have some hot students this winter, and then in the future. Also, we are, continue with our, our live streaming through our Huddle Camp, both of our broadcast video classes. So all our names, varsity, contests, and games, are live streaming. Our CCHS website, our Huddle Camp. And we do have, we have asked for the broadcast video students producing live streams, announcing, we all do. And they will be doing games throughout the winter season, but certainly all of our senior nights, all sports, wrestling, swimming, bowling, and basketball.
Just one que, this is, I know this is a tough one to answer. With our live streaming versus our in-person attendance, does that seem, I know it's hard to know because we're still just coming back from COVID and attendance might be lower just as a function of that. Do you notice any difference there, what are your thoughts on that, if that's impacting our attendance in person?
You don't have to compare to me. I think we're going to have a lot of, you have a lot of live, that is, all of the back.
Okay.
How we play love in the first game, about that tournament this year, also the best numbers. The second is like, can't compete in that, it hurts, you're not dark, but either way, we play love, so they're, they're.
And we are getting views on the live stream too. So, you know, I think the neat thing about that is for family members, people who might not be able to attend in person, then have the opportunity to, to watch, yeah.
That is a huge bonus in terms of grandparents who live up there, out state. They're thanking us to do that. That was last spring, their test, and we have grandparents who live in Paris, right? We're able to watch live, grandson's test.
That's neat.
We can watch live, do, do watch.
That's neat. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Disinger? Okay, thank you for your update there.
Thank you.
Okay. I think an extracurricular, then we have, we do have some Sunday and overnight trips that will be on for approval. Mrs. Hens, do you wanna review these for us, please?
These are all Cedar Crest High School cheerleaders, two of them for Sunday, and one is for overnight and Sunday. So we have Red Lion High School, January 16th. We have Central Dolphin High School, January 23rd, both Sundays. And then Ocean City, Maryland, we have an overnight from Friday to Sunday, February 11th through the 13th. And we're gonna ask for your approval next Monday.
These are all ones that we've had before. Okay. And I suppose, Mrs. Hens, you should just continue into finance and business, we have a few items here.
Okay, so, just wanna review the timeline. I know I talk about this all the time, but the more you hear it, the better you understand the process. For the budget, we always start the February before. So last September, PDE has a deadline to notify school districts of the 2223 Act One base index. And then also, they will provide whether you are allowed to have an adjusted index, which we are. And then in November, I usually go over very high level estimates. And then we also look at the five-year plan and then also proposed capital projects. So we have provided some capital projects that I'll talk about within the next couple of months. At that point, we determine whether we, we are going to go with the, a proposed final budget or a preliminary. And preliminaries in between the, these estimates and the proposed final. And in January, here we are, we review more of what we know now versus back in November, and then the unknowns that are still out there. January 10th, and we're looking to adopt, possibly adopt the opt-out resolution, not to exceed the Act One adjusted index at this point. And I'll talk about this a little more, as we didn't have any exceptions, which would be the main reason for going over the index. So therefore, it's kind of defaulted to this opt-out resolution. April, May timeframe, we'll review and adopt the 2223 proposed final budget. And then June 20th is when we review any changes that we're gonna make from the proposed final budget, and that creates the final budget. It looks like I have proposed there. Oh, yeah, it's the review of the proposed final budget, and then that will come into adopting the final budget in June. So we are, by law, having to approve a final budget by the end of June. So before I talk about amounts, costs, just want to review, and it's, some of this is going to be a repeat of November. But I think it's good to talk about, and we, some of the challenges that school districts have and other businesses have are the continued significant costs of, for the schools, the third-party cyber charter schools. Economic shutdown, all businesses and school districts are feeling this. The price increases for equipment, supplies, construction materials. We saw that when we were approving the, the truck in the fall. We had, were, had to expend 5,000 more than we anticipated because of the increase. Hiring a support staff, we, we, we were struggling with trying to fill positions. And we looked at increases in November when we approved an increase to our classified staff. That did help greatly, so we appreciate your support with that. So that is, looking at the labor cost, all of this is inflation. You'll, you'll see, that's, a lot, a lot of the costs are increasing. And then also employee healthcare, we are seeing a lot of costs there because of the backlog, when, when people weren't able to get their, their procedures done. Special education costs, we always have a concern with, with special education. And then continued additional costs in COVID-related supplies. I'm sure we will always see masks and hand sanitizer, cleaning materials. We will, we're gonna probably feel that effect for many years to come. So the only change is really from November till now is Peasers always certifies their rate in December. So I can tell you that the rate for 2223 is 35.29. That's over 35 cents per dollar spent on salaries. The current is 34.94%. It is slightly below the estimated amount, but it's still a significant amount. Third-party cyber charter schools, fortunately, we are seeing a little bit of a decline due to a majority of the students coming back to school in person. But we still are looking at almost a million dollar difference between the 2019, 2020 amount and this year's amount. Most of this is the same information that we reviewed in November. With, with the changes of the Peasers amount, that has increased to 7%, not quite a million dollars, and then the healthcare insurance, I have increased to 10%. We're gonna watch that very closely over the next couple of months, as well as the other expenditures. And then the also, just again, the third-party cyber charter school. Most of this information is a comparison from budget to budget we need to look at. And still, the, the third-party cyber charter schools is 126% or 1.2 million more than 2021, and again, that's budget to budget. We advanced to the next slide. This is to understand how much we spend on salaries and benefits. The blue section is salaries and benefits. The red section is purchased professional services. That is mainly our IU, nursing services, and supplemental services. So all of those have to do with personnel, whether they're ours or the IU's. Also, the, the purple section is your transportation tuition to other schools, which includes cyber charter schools, as well as approved private schools. And then your, the orange color is your bond payments and budgetary. So again, you can see a majority of our cost, 77% is, is personnel, whether it's ours or, or the IU and other professional services. Other factors that we do know at this point is, like I mentioned, there are no exceptions. There are two options for schools to file for exceptions, to go above the index, and that is special education costs and retirement. And the way you determine whether you are eligible for those exceptions is if there is a difference, enough difference between two years' worth. So it would, for, for Peasers, you look at last year and this year's budget. And then for the, for the special ed, it's the last two full fiscal years completed. Maximal tax increase available within the index for Cornwall-Lebanon is 4.3%. That would provide up to 2.2 million dollar additional funds for the budget. And then what we're also looking at, we don't want to forget, we have been utilizing assigned fund balance for retirement costs. And we've been putting a certain amount to balance the budget every year. And I'm slowly working at moving that down, because this is one-time money. Every year, it's considered one-time money, so you have to make up for that the next year. So as we work towards the end of that assigned amount, I'm slowly trying to move it down, so it's not as much of an impact the next budget. Of course, what we still don't know is a lot, we're, we're halfway through the year. The local revenue, state subsidies, most of the time, the, the state budget is not passed by the time we have to approve our final budget. Federal subsidies, the title programs, that we usually find out in May. And then healthcare costs, we're watching those closely, and then also your special education costs. So here again, you've seen this, this is kind of a history of where Cornwall-Lebanon is with the increases. And as you'll see, 4.3% is where we are for the maximum. This is based on inflation. I mean, you're, you're gonna see the increase of Act One because of that. This I also shared in November, this is where we are in Lebanon County. We're towards the, the bottom with the millage. And then we also do collect, we collect 1% for the earned income tax, and we do share half of that with the municipalities. Right now, we're estimated a little shy of a $90 million budget. And again, this, I have not changed any of, of the, the numbers, because there wasn't a whole lot of changes from November. But again, we are asking for your approval next week to approve the resolution to not exceed the Act One index.
So we'll just pause there for a minute. It's a lot of information, pretty high level about the budget. Long story short, the index is at 4.3%. And we have so many unknowns. And the action that needs to be taken is that if a board is going to exceed that, is they would have to put a budget on the table, and then to potentially go to a referendum, which is, is not something that we're saying to do. So that would be, the recommendation would be to pass the resolution to not exceed the Act One index of 4.3. You know, that being said, I think it's important, some of the things that Mrs. Hens covered there with just personnel representing over three-quarters of our budget, because that's what we do. We provide services by having other people do them, that's not surprising. But as labor costs go up, supply costs, equipment costs go up, these are ongoing inflationary things that we and every other public entity have to contend with. The best example, as Mrs. Hens cited, is the, the truck that we bought, where we had to pay sticker price. I'm still kind of, I know we have much bigger expenditures than that, but, you know, that's one where you just think, wow, you know?
We couldn't even pick our color.
Like, we couldn't even pick the right, we couldn't even pick the color we wanted, we had to pay sticker price. I mean, does anybody ever remember a time like that where you bought a car? You couldn't pick the color you want, but you had to pay sticker price? Well, that's just one in our budget, relatively small purchase. But it kind of shows the complexity of all the purchases that we're making, and how these costs are becoming more and more expensive. And that's gonna be a challenge for us going forward, so we need to have, really just engage in long-term kind of thinking about what we're going to need now, and also into the future, as we look to, we look to manage this. And hopefully, some of these unknowns will come into focus. But are there any questions about any of those items that Mrs. Hens talked about?
Can you run back one slide, Dr. Murray? One, oh, maybe that ain't it. No, no, that ain't it either, never mind, maybe it's, never mind, go back to where we were, sorry, sorry.
That's okay, no.
I saw a $1 million figure, and it, and I thought it was related to, so it might have just been this one, and I, we didn't get there yet, so.
We did.
The, down there under virtual education.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that wasn't fund, that wasn't fund balance transfer?
No. What this is, is this, that million dollars was used this year. What we're in right now to balance our budget, and it was a signed fund balance that we had put to the side two years ago, anticipating that we're gonna get hit with virtual costs. So that is, and that's a hurdle that we have to make too, because again, this is a one-time amount that we have to make up for in 2223.
Thank you, sorry to make you jump through all them slides.
Yeah, that's a good question, because we have to figure out a way to build that part in there. And there are ways that that can be done, but it's, it's difficult until we know where all the final expenditures will be. Any other questions?
Again, over the next couple of months, Mr. Bencin here and I will be working at, plugging away at the different amounts. There are items that we do know, like, we currently have a CBA in place that expires in '23, so we know that information, and we'll kind of proceed with the contracts that we have in place that are multi-year. And we'll, we'll slowly nip away at this.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hens. The, the next part here, so there'll be a motion on for that budget opt-out to?
Resolution.
Resolution, whatever the technical name is, to not exceed the index, that's the bottom line.
Correct.
Motion on to not do that. But then the next item here that Mrs. Hens is gonna talk about relates to that. It's, it's a piece of that puzzle, in terms of, we talk about the campus renovation.
Yeah, so the first line, I know it's a lot of information at once, so all of, all of these numbers are in thousands. So the first number, the budget amount in 2223 is 4,950,000. That is, the first line is the amount that we have set to the side in the general fund, that is for debt service or capital projects. For, the second line is how much we actually are paying out right now in bonds and loans. And then the next line is what we had received so far, based on what our estimated amount was for our project, the campus project. So we had estimated several years ago that the campus project would be about $80 million. So that is what we were working on just to plan ahead. And then, based on the budget amount and the first line item, then anything else would be capital project reserve. So we would reserve the rest of it for our regular projects, as well as possibly the campus. So it kind of helps us plan ahead to keep it smooth throughout the next years. That's how we kind of work in the, the bonds when we come to our campus. So there isn't a hiccup when it comes to tax increases. I know it's a lot to look at.
It's a lot, and that's obviously a lot of money.
Like Dr. Manson said, it's, it's a piece of the puzzle, that first, the, the first line item is a piece of our $90 million budget.
If you look at this though, you can see where some of the current bond loan payments drop off, as Mrs. Hens noted. And then that's where, that gives the opportunity to then finance the campus project. And that's why the timing of this is critical with how it's managed and how some of those bond payments are structured. So what's the big? So what's the biggest challenge of this? We have a lot of supply chain issues, materials costs. You know, some of the things that we were looking at a couple of years ago. What, what will the renovation be? We're not sure yet. We'll get some, as we move through this process, we'll be able to get some more accurate numbers on that. But this is how this would work with trying to keep payments relatively level with obviously increasing that budgeted amount slightly there. But it has to be, it has to be a process of how it's, how that's built in. And we're going to look at some other options there, too, if it's more, if it's less and other things. We'll look at different scenarios, but this is just one scenario that Mrs. Hens had worked up. Does that make sense, how that, how that works? And you could, you could see where the sum drop off. And this is, this has all been part of really a long-term district plan as in how we do our project. This is also why the length of term that we take out bonds, you have to be careful about because if we say, well, the project's going to cost more, we could borrow more money and we could take out a longer term. Well, you know, that might help us today. However, somewhere down the road, people, none of us sitting here are going to have to pay that bill, right? And what happens is then, when it comes time for them to have to look at how they're going to do projects, they're not going to be able to do that because they're still going to be carrying that debt service payment longer. So we want to be responsible now, but also for the future with how we do this, too. And that's where sometimes you do see districts or public entities get into trouble because there isn't that structuring on themselves. Okay? All right. Thank you. I think you have one other item here, then. Is that correct?
I do. This one's a little easier. We received the bulletin. And as for the twenty-twenty-two mileage reimbursement rate, it is at fifty-eight cents. That's up from fifty-six cents. And we'll ask for your approval so we can reimburse staff that have to drive for their job duty. That's it.
Okay. It's an electric car. Thank you, Mrs. Hens.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to personnel. And I believe, Dr. Clemmons, you have these items here about what we have on.
I sure do.
Elementary, secondary for next week, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you. We, you will be seeing next week, we have a retirement of Kenneth Littenberg, fourth grade instructor, Union Canal Elementary School, effective at the conclusion of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We also have a resignation of Kirsten Good, autistic support instructor, Cornwall Elementary School, effective December twenty-third of twenty-twenty-one. There's been a change in employment status. Seth McNally, from a long-term substitute to a professional contract, fifth grade instructor, Cornwall Elementary School, effective second semester of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then we're looking to hire Belinda Fertini, primary assistant at Cornwall Elementary School. Vicky Kaufman, personal care assistant for elementary, Ebenezer Elementary School. And in secondary, we have the, we rescind an offer of employment to Ashton Kraus, building assistant, part-time, Cedar Crest High School. And then we have several resignations. We have Monica Monique Davis, building assistant at Cedar Crest High School, effective November twenty-ninth of twenty-one. Jennifer Wagner, assistant track and field coach, that was effective December first. Kimberly Miller, assistant track and field coach, effective December tenth. And then Madeline Gable, assistant softball coach, effective December twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Rachel Fisher, assistant junior varsity softball coach, effective December twentieth, twenty-one. And then Rachel Fisher, assistant junior varsity softball coach, effective December twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Sherry Starner, building assistant at Cedar Crest Middle School, effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Christine Wolf, who was a long-term substitute guidance counselor, Cedar Crest Middle School, effective January fourteenth of twenty-twenty-two. And then we have some leaves. Mary Gardner, guidance counselor, Cedar Crest Middle School, child rearing leave, effective second semester of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then we also are looking to hire Megan Devon, a long-term substitute, English instructor at Cedar Crest Middle School, effective second semester of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Wanda Lopez Rock, a building assistant, Cedar Crest High School. Alicia Hados, assistant middle school girls' basketball coach, fifty percent. Rachel Miller, assistant middle school girls' basketball coach, fifty percent. And then Wendy Marini, assistant boys and girls' swimming coach. And we have William Jupenlops, assistant boys and girls' swimming coach, fifty percent. And Andrew Lear, assistant boys and girls' swimming coach at fifty percent. We have a designate, in the district, a resignation of Shawna Urban, pupil services secretary, Educational Service Center, effective December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. And then, so we're looking to hire Laura Stumpf, data specialist. And then we also will move on to the business office. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the cafeteria, we're sending an offer of employment to Maria Rivera, cafeteria helper, Cedar Crest High School. We have a retirement, Audrey Blauk, elementary cafeteria manager, Union Canal Elementary School, effective at the conclusion of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. She had twenty-five, twenty years here. Vicky, we have a hiring of Vicky Umbenhauer, cafeteria helper, Cedar Crest Middle School, effective December sixth. We also have, under custodial maintenance resignations, Michael Garrett, district grounds custodian, effective November twenty-sixth. And Matthew Tillinger, district maintenance, effective January third. Change in employment status for Brian Cruz Morales from district custodian, Cedar Crest High School, to district custodian full-time. He was part-time at Cedar Crest Middle School, effective December sixth. And then we also have Dennis Wolf, district custodian, moving from Cornwall Elementary to Union Canal Elementary, effective December seventh. We have two hires, Eric Fuller, district custodian, Cornwall Elementary School, effective December sixth. And Anthony Gabels, district custodian, Cedar Crest High School. We are also going to be asking for your approval to create one full-time, six-and-a-half-hour personnel care assistant position at the secondary level.
I, I have a question about the middle school guidance department. If we have one that resigned and one that is taking a leave, does that leave Mr. Swartz all by himself? Help?
At the, yeah.
Go ahead, Dr. Murray.
Yes, Mrs. Gardner has been on childbearing leave, which was previously just approved for the first semester. It is my understanding that we will be looking for another LTS. We were hoping she could stay, but she has a permanent position that she was offered.
Okay, I mean, that's an area of great need in the middle school.
So we have two that are there right now. This is the.
Yes, we have two that are there right now. This is the sixth grade guidance counselor position. And we have posted the position. And I did check right beforehand, we have two applicants already.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
So I think you were wondering if there was two people that weren't going to be there. Is that, yeah. But it's one person, it's just that one is on leave and the other is a long-term sub who was in that position on leave, right? Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions about the personnel items?
Yeah, just quickly, the data specialist, it's a district position. Can you review that, is that?
Yes. So that is one of the positions when we looked at our transportation and our PIMS coordinator. That's one of the ones that, when we restructured that a couple of months ago, was realigned to work with our technologies department for our PIMS. That's our Pennsylvania Information Management System upload. So that was a position that was created November? I'd have to check back, but I think it was November or perhaps October.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we've just been looking to fill that to try to get the right person in that job. So we did have a little bit of overlap, if you recall, too, because we had Mrs. Lightner retired at the end of December. So we had a little bit of time here in which to fill that job. Yeah. Any other questions about personnel? Okay. Let's go on to policy management, then. We have the, first item we have up here is this enrollment comparison study. If you recall, back in the fall, we talked about working with the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials to have a enrollment study, and we talked about other options. And Mrs. Hens looked into what some of these options were and consulted with a number of people and found out that really the PASBO one was really the best option out there and to do some comparisons. So I think what she has to share here are some very interesting comparisons about historical as well as projections going forward. And you can see how these things fall in line. These are very relevant for the campus project and also when we look at what our building needs are within the district.
All right, so the, just upfront, I just want to thank Wes Bencine again for helping to put this report together. I also want to thank the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials for working with me. I, they chalked it up as a membership benefit. So even though we approved a maximum of two thousand dollars to do this study, they worked with me and, and helped me review the projections that I do annually as well as provided their projections at no cost, additional cost. So I do want to thank them. What I wanted to do is I wanted to look back on the most recent study that we did, what's two thousand four, two thousand five, from the PA Economy League, just to see where their projections came in at. I was just curious to see actual versus their projections. So that was the first step. And then the second step is to compare three different sources for this study. And one of them is, is the projection that I do annually in, in October, as well as the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials' projection. And then also the Pennsylvania Department of Education. They also have projections they do every three years. So I want to kind of put those together and do a comparison to see where we are average or what the peaks are for each level. So that is pretty much what the report is, is in a nutshell. All right, so the first slide that I have is a comparison to where we were. Can advance to the next slide, Dr. Murray? Thank you. The, this is the Pennsylvania Economy League's projections. They had a projection and then they had a high and a low. And then the black bolded line is our actual. So the orange gold is the middle projection. And then their highs, the red, and the lows are the greens. And as you'll see, pretty much veered off in the two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And you could see there are a lot of different external pressures there at that point in our life that kind of changed the projection. So if those didn't happen, would they have been spot on? I, I really don't know. But you can see just, again, the study that was done versus the actual. At any point in time, it was about, I think the maximum separation was two hundred and eighty students in the middle there, about two thousand, what was it, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Again, that's not really far off when you're projecting ten years. But at the end, they were about two hundred students separated at the end for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen year. So if you move on to, and those are on, for the report is on page eight and nine for that last part. I also wanted to note that just, on the next slide that we are looking at is the actual, which is the, the black. And the red is my projections for, that I did in October. So I am actually a little higher than PASBO came in, the green, and projected that our, our enrollment would projection go down to. They projected by twenty-thirty that our, our enrollment would be at four thousand eight hundred and sixty. My projection was at five thousand forty. Now, there are peaks in between there that I'll go over at the different levels. But it was kind of interesting, if you look at it, there's still those peaks and valleys that are still very defined on each projection. I thought that was interesting. And it looks like PDE came in right in between all of them. So that was look at just a total enrollment. We're looking at now the elementary projections. This is a little more variables than the other two levels that you'll see. But for the, for the most part, we're pretty close when it comes to projections. My projections were the, the highest for the peak. And actually, it's thirty, thirty-one is where I come in the highest. And that's at two thousand two hundred and forty enrollment, and that's ten years from now. So a lot of things could change by then, but that's the highest. PASBO predicted the lowest at two thousand one hundred and once. That's about a hundred and forty student difference. And you're going to see changes here because there's only, the birth, the birth rates are only available up until a certain amount of time. And then you kind of have to estimate after that to be able to get your projections. And then kindergarten's in there, too, which is kind of a, a wild card there to estimate how many kids are going to come into kindergarten. But for the most part, I think we, we're pretty much close to each other. For the middle school, we're very close. The red and the green, the red is, is my projection, and then the green is PASBO's projection. We're both projecting that middle school will have its peak for the ten years at one thousand two hundred and ninety, that I projected. And then PASBO's projected one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight. So we're only like two apart. I mean, it's next year, but they are looking at the peak next year. And in the end, at thirty, thirty-one, we're all pretty close, within like less than forty students. For the high school, the, the peaks are in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and it kind of goes along with where we're, we're peaking at the middle school. And PASBO is actually predicting one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight during the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, whereas I was predicting one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. So we're thirteen students away from each other in twenty-six, twenty-seven. These graphs are on page eighteen of the report. But in the end, as you'll see, the high school, for thirty, thirty-one, we're pretty much spot on with each other. So in summary, the ten-year projection, again, it was three different sources put together. The highest total enrollment projection that we're, that we're projecting over the next ten years is at over five thousand. And that is in my projection. Everyone else was lower. Highest peaks in the different levels, elementary, again, was at two thousand two hundred and forty in thirty, thirty-one. That was my projection. Again, that's ten years from now. I do a projection every year as part of the budget process in October. So we will see any tweaks as we're going along. Middle school, the projection for the high, the highest is one thousand two hundred and ninety, and that's in, that's next year, twenty-two, twenty-three. And then high school, it was peak. Like I said, a PASBO had it at one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight for high school at twenty-six, twenty-seven. Obviously, external events will play a role over the next five years. Depends on what happens. I'm interested to see what the pandemic has done, and we'll probably see that as we're going along. But for, for the estimates that we have here in this enrollment based on three different sources, it shows. it shows that we have the capacity to take care of the peaks over the next 10 years.
Questions about that?
It's very hard to predict, like whether it's Ebenezer, Union Canal, South Lebanon, but...
The particular, the elementary, that's a little bit different. But this looks a total enrollment across the district is what it looks like, looks at. I know that a lot of times people look at, we see different developments that are being built and we think that's going to automatically, we're going to gain X number of students there. But sometimes what we forget is that we're also losing some over here. And areas age up and age out. And I can think of some even here within South Lebanon Township where we may have had a lot of students in elementary or in certain school districts at one time, but now we just don't because that just happens over a period of time, right? And we see this happen without, through different communities throughout. We also know that within our, within our district, there is some housing being built that is less likely to have students. If it is 55 and older communities, you know, that's becoming more common within Lebanon County as well. So all those factors play into this when we look at enrollments. And we remember too that, you know, not every house has, you know, 1.8, whatever the number is, students, right? Never know how you get that, but that's not how it works because you have people that maybe do not have children, people that are single, people that have grandchildren, people that their children aren't in school yet. There's a whole slew of variables there. So this methodology has proved pretty well. But it's very interesting to look at it, something that we have to continue to review. It is a lot of data. This was the short version.
If you want more details, the report's in there. It's pretty fascinating, I think.
It really is. You remember Kurt, for some of you remember Mr. Phillips. He would actually go through the statistical methodology for you, about how it was calculated. Mrs. Hens could do that for you if you'd like, but she doesn't have to about how it's statistically determined.
I just enjoyed the process because I've been doing this for four years now and I inherited this massive workbook that I was, just had to make sure that I go through every step and to be able to see, you know, that I match with others and pretty darn close. It makes me feel pretty good.
Very relevant, as I said, when we look at our buildings and our projections and our needs throughout the district because that's what helps us to drive some of the decision-making we have.
So have we ever determined what that magic number is that will cause a problem eventually?
It's a good question. You know, I think there are capacities within our buildings. I think if, I don't know that there's one magic number. I think what it does is that if we see our elementary schools, you know, we're at 21, 2150, if we would start to see those creep up in that, I'm going to throw a wild number out here, okay? So don't hold me to it, you know, 24, 2500 and growing. That's where we would lose capacity within our elementary schools. We would start to be stretched and even just even getting closer to that, you know, a couple hundred more than that. Our middle school at 1290 next year, will be pretty packed next year. But when we look at it, the studies are right on because we know that the enrollment in our elementary grades, we have some classes that are much smaller. So we have classes now well over 400, and they're all going to be there together. But yet we have classes that are 325, 350 in some of our elementary grades. And we've had this before. This isn't, even when you look back historically through the district, at one time, there were 1,600 students in the high school here back in the 70s, right? If I recall, enrollment was pretty significant then. A smaller building too, right? But so, so I think there isn't a magic number. I think we have to look at what the space is and how we can utilize it. I think when you talk about secondary buildings too, and I think you have the introduction of virtual education because we have some students now availing themselves of that. We see some of that here at the high school level. All those things can impact the need for physical space. So it's even a little more complex than what it used to be.
Can you speak into your mic?
Oh, thank you. I'm just curious, like, have they done projections before? Or do you have to ask them to do the projections and then we get that data from them? Like, I guess I'm, are there other projections we could look at from how it went from 2010 to 2017? Are there, is there any?
PDE has been doing projections.
I'm sorry?
PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, has been doing projections. And actually, Wes tried to reach it out to get the historical.
That's what I meant.
And they were not able to provide it. They just said it wasn't available, so, and I'm a little confused on that part. But, but that's, that's the only place. Otherwise, we actually sort of hired the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials to do it for us. And they, the executive director there is a former business manager who has also had to do projections himself and has history there on how he, he didn't, he wanted to use that cohort survival. And he said he tried at one point, knowing other developments that were going into his school district. And he said he tried changing that cohort survival to add to it. And he said in the end, the cohort survival played out. As long as you do that on an annual basis, you will, it will be, it will work out pretty well. Yeah, I don't know what happened to PDE's history. I was hoping like one of our colleagues would have it.
Right, so you can just see how their prediction played out in real life then? And possibly use that for future information?
PDE, I believe this is their third year for their projections. So they'll be coming out with new numbers. So I'm curious to see how those tweak compared to what PASBO and I had.
So the Pennsylvania Department of Education does it every three years. So their data look back isn't as current as the data set that Mrs. Hens and PASBO looked at. So that's why you see some deviation with PDE's versus where the, where the other two are.
I wonder why they couldn't look back previous to that though, like why?
Why couldn't PDE do that?
You would think that information would be.
It's somewhere there. I mean, we send them so much information. I know it's there, but...
It has to be there. I don't, I don't...
Well, don't we have that information? I mean, we've been doing this for, I mean, Kurt's been doing it for 10 years or whatever.
We have it, we have our projections. As a matter of fact, if you look at first...
We don't have PDE's, but we have ours.
Yes.
If PDE did it 10 years ago and we did this chart, we would have PDE's chart and our chart together that you could have both that information back then.
When I look back, I'm not sure that we have that for PDE back then.
We never put PDE's together with it.
Do we have anybody else's numbers from back when we did them?
The Pennsylvania Economy League when they did theirs, and that's a part of the report.
Okay.
That was, that was the other part that we looked at, that Pell study.
That was the very first graph that I had as a part of the slide to compare. Because I was curious to see at what point does it deviate? And it's kind of in that recession time where nobody can predict.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, here.
Yeah, that, yeah, in the report, you'll see that a lot of the projections that Kurt had done projected straight up for enrollment, and it never came to fruition.
So I would note that, I think these numbers are as accurate as they can be, but that last bullet is very important there. External events will play a role, things that are beyond our control that can impact our enrollment, right?
Yeah, so maybe five years from now, we'll see that impact of the pandemic. We don't know, five, six years from now.
Who can say? But we'll continue to monitor this, and this is, this is the data that we'll be looking at as we look at our upcoming projects.
And I'll continue to do it on an annual basis in October.
Okay, any other questions about that? Okay, I think we are on next to policy reviews. And we have some policies that we placed on the table back in November. We had a shortened timeframe between November and our December meeting. So these policies were not approved in December. And they would be on for approval next week. The, the graduation requirements is one that is, that's due to COVID-related changes with Keystone assessments and tests and being part of graduation requirements. So we're revising that again because there were changes in legislation. 006 and 903 are meetings and then public participation and board meetings. So we did talk about that at our last meeting back in November at length about just what that looks like, defining how that works at our work sessions, at our public meetings, the guidelines for participation, and just kind of codifying what our practice is because this policy hasn't been looked at. So we didn't really make any major changes to it. Just tried to add clarity to it so that we could communicate it as effectively as possible to anyone who is wishing to participate. Are there any questions about that? Discussion about that? I know in November, we talked about it at length, but I just wanted to ask because next week it would be on for approval, be on for final approval.
I think the revised policy is very clear, makes everything very succinct, and this is what you do. And yeah, so thank you for doing, is that all from PSBA?
Some parts of it are, yes. Parts of that policy are from PSBA about the publishing of board meetings and the things you have to do there. But the participation part, there are guidelines that we have to follow, but districts do have some latitude with how they handle public participation, whether or not they choose to handle a question and answer. Many districts do not do that, like we do here at our work session. In fact, most do not have, in fact, none that I'm aware of do that. Just a fact.
Keep going.
And then the public participation piece, we have the five minutes. Some districts have gone to three. Some districts will have a hard cap at, you know, 45 minutes or an hour. And I think what this policy does is says that the board has the ability to evaluate that situation, call a special meeting if it looks like it's going to be a meeting that's going to be going to some ridiculous hour of the morning, right? And then to do it that way, which seems like a more prudent way to do it. Because if you set a hard cutoff, well, you know, are you really going to do that if it's a five-minute difference? No, you're not going to do that or a little bit.
So this is tailored to us and good, very clear.
Is, and I think it's worked with public participation that we've had over the span of the past year. It seems like it's worked reasonably well. So, okay. So we'll have that on for approval. And then the policies that would be on to be placed on the table. The first one is attendance. And attendance, just a brief summary of this. This is another one where there are changes recommended by PSBA. And the, some of the biggest changes highlighted, some of it's formatting because they've gone to making their policies in this consistent format with categories. And of course, they have their own legal counsel that reviews it, which is, which is a great resource for us. But they changed child to student throughout the document. Parent guardians to person in parental relation, judge to magisterial judge. The other one are the definitions section on page two. And then the one that's bold is beginning with the academic year 2021, compulsory school age shall, shall mean no later than age six and until age 18. Because previously, it was under age eight till age 17 for compulsory attendance. So this is reflecting the change in the legislation that occurred. And we're just now updating the, we've been following the law, but we're updating our policy. Okay. That's that one. And Mrs. Hens, I think we have a few policies from the business office on here.
Yes, annually, the amount that's based on whether we have to do competitive bids or quotations increases. And we put the policies on. It looks like we're able to do the competitive bid amount very general, so we don't have to update it. But we do have the quotations in there at 11.8. That has actually increased, I believe, about $300 from last year. The competitive bid, a couple hundred dollars as well change. But very general changes there with, with the purchase subject to bidder quotation. It just has to do with the amounts. As for the 611, that one, just a couple of changes. Again, we're trying to avoid having to put the amounts in so we don't have to approve it every year. And then just clarification on titles of positions that we have here at the district. And then also just clarification on how we do actually determine whether there's a bid or quotation that has to be done. And that is pretty much through the building principals or department heads, those that want to make the purchase should determine that. And then we'll just confirm it or do like a double check before the purchase is approved. So again, it's pretty much what we're practicing now. As for the last one, purchase is not budgeted. There are no changes there, so this is more of a review. Not going to make any changes.
Questions?
There's nowhere, no way in 610 price quotations that we can eliminate the, the dollar amount.
So that we don't have to revise the policy?
Constantly adjusting the, page three.
Yeah, I guess we could.
I know we go through this at IU 13 as well. It's just...
We could look at doing the same wording that we do for the competitive bid.
As you did for the, but unless, unless we like it that there, that amount is there so that we oversee more prudently.
I mean, the language way that we could do it, we could say that supplies and appliances costing a base amount in accordance with the amounts that's adjusted annually.
Kind of like the wording that was used for the competitive bid.
Yeah, without putting in exact, so that it wouldn't have to constantly be...
Yeah, we can look at doing that.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out there because it's a problem.
Because immediately when that's adjusted, then the policy needs to be updated.
Well, anyway.
You want us to look at doing that? We could just reword those sections there?
And you can all tell me, Deefenbach, you're out of line. Just leave it alone. That's fine.
No, I mean, that's okay. I think it's...
It comes up at IU 13 with GNA almost every time.
And there's so many of these policies to look at that that's one of those things that can, is easy to try to forget.
So maybe it's a good idea to keep the dollar amount in. I don't know. Somebody wiser than me has to decide that.
Let me take a look to see if this is suggested by PSBA, which, I mean, if it is, I want to go along with what they're suggesting, but let me see if we can do that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions about policies? Okay, and I think we have one item, Dr. Long, under People Services Cafeteria.
Yes, we're asking for board approval for a contract with a Vista School for Educational Services. This was a student that moved into our district mid-year.
That's just a routine, need to approve that contract. It is. Okay, and then I think under Technology and Transportation, Dr. Murray. We have some items here.
Yeah, next Monday, yeah, just a few quick items. Next Monday, there will be a motion to approve allowing us to use federal E-rate dollars for an infrastructure project that will be coming up. So an E-rate project is basically, if you look on your phone bills, there's always a little tax that's taken off. That goes into a fund that then helps connect schools and libraries together. And this goes out as a competitive bid. And what we need is board approval to advertise for that bid. What we're going to be working on is a multi-phase infrastructure project. As you can tell, we've been really ramping up and preparing for the future. Last year, I talked about a fiber project that we're getting near to completion now where it'll be connecting all of our buildings via fiber. So it's getting closer. It's been delayed by exactly what everybody has said here, labor, supplies, issues like that. So now we're looking at the building-wide structure. So now we're looking at the building-wide structure. As you can tell, before, we were just looking at a few websites here and there. They're static websites. Now that's being replaced with video, sound, more interactivity, so it's taking up a larger amount of bandwidth. So we're planning for the future on this, so we're going to be phasing this in over several buildings. And on Monday, there will be a motion to allow us to go out for a competitive bid to look at the infrastructure project for South Lebanon. And that entails improving the wireless connection, so all the little access points that are in the rooms, and then also the switches that allow us to route data back and forth and back to campus. So that'll be a motion that's going to be on for Monday. Any questions about that particular project? Okay, another project that we are planning on, this is an item that we are planning to place in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, but I wanted to make everybody aware. This is a little bit before we had wanted to do a telephone system, but a series of events have kind of led us up to doing a telephone system upgrade. The end users won't know a difference, meaning that the telephones that are in the classrooms and the offices will look the same. We're just taking the telephone system and now bringing it into some type of a cloud solution. A perfect example of this, if anybody has like a Comcast service where you've bundled TV, internet, and telephone together, it's something similar to that. So we've got to upgrade our our servers on the backend. The servers are no longer made, the parts are no longer there. We had one failure that we were able to repair, but again, it's showing its age. I'd hoped to make it last another two years, but we're going to do that a little one year earlier. I'm just going to be switching out planned projects in our roadmap. But this is taking our phone system that's currently in-house here and bringing it into kind of like a cloud or basically it's on servers owned by another company that we'll be able to monitor and check and and do everything that we were able to do before. It just gives us more reliability and more stability. This one I wanted to mention, you'll see a little bit of activity over at Cornwall Elementary School. As you're aware, we have towers at each one of our elementary schools that point back to the VA Water Tower, and that's how each elementary receives their data and voice. So that's how they get their internet from us, that's how they get their phones from us. We're able to partner with Chantel, which was a Sprint company. As you're aware, Sprint was bought out by T-Mobile, and we entered into this agreement back in twenty thirteen. They're going to come in, they're going to upgrade a few equipment. No major updates on it, but there will be some trucks there. They're just going to change out some appliances and make it 5G. So they're just updating their equipment as well. But there will be a few trucks there. They're going to do it after school hour, so there's no interruption of classes or anything like that. One thing I wanted to kind of circle back on was the district cybersecurity. I'd mentioned this a couple of times before. December is a very hot month for cybersecurity experts. For the most part, the reason that they do, more people are spending funding, they're spending using credit cards, procurement cards, and sometimes they're not as careful watching their expenditures, and people can slide in, steal security card or social security numbers and credit card numbers and things of that nature. So we've really ramped up things here to make sure that we haven't had any incidences. We've segmented our network to make sure that we have all the proper protocols in. We've teamed up with the IU. We have many security benchmark points in place between us and them. And then we also launched a fun campaign with our staff. We called it Tech the Halls right before they or break came out. And each day, we released a new video on some type of cybersecurity, whether it was passwords and just how to have a more secure password, backing up your laptop, just making sure that you understand when you get a spam email and not to click on the link and give away your username and password, just different things like that. So we have, you know, we had that really fun campaign that we launched. We're actually getting ready or gearing up for another one, because we feel that the cybersecurity, we're seeing more and more threats starting to come and knock on our front door. So we're just making sure that our staff are aware and don't fall prey to one of these phishing attacks or another cybersecurity threat. So we've we've been teaming up quite frequently with the IU. They've been doing a great job. One major project that we're going to be launching here very, very shortly is multi-factor authentication. The reason that we're doing that, if somebody by chance does steal a username and password, they can't get into a system unless it's authenticated via a second method. So whether I have it on my phone and I say okay, or I have another little USB that's plugged into the laptop and it says, oh, yes, this is a district computer with a district user logging in. So we've got a couple checkpoints in place to make that happen. So that's going to be another nice project we're going to be launching soon, very soon. And then to kind of end it all, a very fun one with district streaming. Very, very proud of our students. We were able to stream a multitude of events. Of course, we're well aware of the athletic events that we streamed in our gyms. Mr. Disinger mentioned about the huddle cam that we have that can auto-track motion. We're looking at actually putting one of those in our stadium as well, so any events that are out in the stadium, it'll be able to, you know, track that motion. But then all of the other streams that we have going in place, whether it was the musical or some of the band concerts or choral concerts, everything was streamed either with Mr. Hasslinger's class or through each school has their own morning announcements crew. So we had some morning announcements elementary students streaming choral concerts, which was really nice. It'd be all set up, and we would help them with the prep work, and then they would be able to control the camera shots and the mics and things like that. So it gave them some really good experience. And then we have the morning announcement crews that are just doing a phenomenal job with bringing out all kinds of creative ways of explaining the different announcements that are out there, but also putting together all types of advertisements so that everybody understands all the events that are happening in their school. And we're embarking on a very fun adventure of bringing everybody under one umbrella. So what we're going to try to do is look at using very similar equipment all the way up from elementary to high school. Now, of course, it'll it'll increase in, you know, complexity as you move up, but if you kind of start playing around with ideas and get on the crew in elementary school, you'll be right at home when you're hitting or middle school. And then when you're at high school, you already know the terminology, the types of software and equipment to use, so that they catch on much quicker. And it also helps to our advantage, too, that allows us to stream more and more events, because I don't anticipate this going away. We've had some great feedback, as like Mr. Disinger said, with athletics, but we've had this from great, from all over the place. When we were doing the band and orchestra concerts, we had great feedback from grandparents and other relatives that were out of state that just couldn't make those concerts, but they had a chance to tune in and then, you know, do a quick rewind and watch it during the stream as well. So a great, great experience for the students, a great opportunity for them. Just wanted to kind of make everybody aware of, it's not just one specific type, but it's every sport, it's every, basically, you know, poetry out loud, musical, theater production, concert, they're all being streamed, and we're also making it more available in the classrooms. So one of the things that we're working with is, some of these concerts are taking place during the school day so that it can be watched in the classroom. So more of the students are getting involved to see what possibilities are out there, and that's going to bring our numbers up, especially in the music department and some of the theater activities as well. So we're very, very excited about that.
Any questions for Dr. Murray about any of the technology and transportation items?
I do have a question. So it's all live, correct, that they can watch it live?
Yes, it's all live. Some things we have to take down immediately because of copyright law, but some things we can then archive. So you'll see some have been archived that you can go back and watch again. Some we have to stream and then remove from, we use YouTube, so we have to remove that just because of the copyright license that we have.
So you're saying that it would, some of them would just stay there on the website? Like, it wouldn't be something that a parent would have to request?
Right, yeah. So most of the time, we have a couple different avenues that we use to archive our video. So we have a Cornwall Lebanon School District Archive. That's basically the one that the technology department uses. So when we travel with our kind of, you know, travel equipment, we use that one. But each elementary school and the middle school and the high school also have their own station. So what we're trying to encourage is, if it's happening at that school, then it would go on that particular station, so it's much easier for the parents to find like a certain streaming of a morning announcement or a concert or something like that. So if I have a student that is going to Ebenezer, all of the Ebenezer events are on the Ebenezer YouTube channel. So we're working our our way towards that.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Murray. This concludes the regular session agenda items that we have for the Board of School Directors for our work session. Are there any questions, you have the board directors, about any of the items that we've presented tonight or discussed?
I do have another question.
Yes.
So we talked about the COVID testing. Are we are we actually having people come to the test?
Oh, yes.
So we do?
Oh, yeah, we are. Yeah, we are. We had, you know, we'll probably fill most of our slots. We have a couple dozen slots available. It varies, it just depends. Some weeks, it hasn't been as full as others. Right before the holidays, it was pretty full. We would anticipate we'll probably get some more tomorrow. We're limited just in the staff time that we have with the nurse, and we always knew that was going to be an issue, but people are availing themselves. Remember, this is, I always want to clarify, it's for students and then for staff, because I know that there are people in the community that are looking to get the tests, and we can't do that for the whole community.
So would a parent call the district or would they call the school that their child goes to?
They would call the district. They would actually call Ms. Chrisinger at the district office, and then they would have an appointment that was scheduled and set up.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from anyone in attendance about any of the items that we've talked Okay. This does conclude our regular session items. Mrs. Schlegel.
Thank you, Dr. Demensik. Once again, you have provided us with a lot of information. Thank you for that and for the thorough and updated reports. You know, thanks. A lot of time and effort has been put into what you have shared tonight, I can tell that, so thank you. Okay, I will make an announcement that we will have an executive session for the purpose of personnel and a student discipline issue. And with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Motion, a second to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.